So we're actually at quorum and it's even a little after seven. So we should probably call this meeting to order, right? At, what, 7:02. First order of business is additions and corrections to the agenda. I have one. Does anybody else have anything we need to change on the agenda? No? Okay. We've been asked to move an executive session to the first part of the meeting for a contractual matter. So the first thing we need to do is actually have a motion to go into executive session to discuss a contractual matter, then we can snip out to a classroom real quick and Drew moved, Howie seconded. How much of our stuff do we need to bring up? Anything? Nothing? Okay. All right. So it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session for a contractual matter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we're in. We'll be right back. So, we're back from executive session. No action comes out of it. Next piece on the agenda is actually the members of the public. So we have a lot of public with us tonight. Y'all want to introduce yourselves and then let us know if you're here for some specific thing you'd like to speak about now, or you're just here to see what happens and perhaps add something to the discussion as we go. You want to start, Chris?
Yeah, sure. Chris Barton, teacher at the high school. Here because of the budget.
Speaker of the House, I also work at the head of the school. Yeah, just listening, hearing. I care about the school, so I want to hear what's being talked about.
Okay.
I'm Johanna Liskowski-Doeck. I also teach at Leland and Gray and am here to support and be part of the budget.
Jane Homestead, I teach here, right across the hallway. And I'm also here because of the budget.
John Zeratelo, community member, and I'm here to take it all in.
Okay.
Gerald Salimansese, I teach Spanish here and I'm here to support the school. The budget.
Barbara Marchant, school librarian. It's not uncommon for me to be at budget meetings.
No, it's not.
John Evans, a citizen in town, so just out for the night. What's going on?
Al Clausen, Townsend Elementary School Board Chair. So this obviously has implications for me as well. And I certainly want some clarification on what I read in Act 46 versus an email that we have from Brad James.
All right. And way in the back there?
Oh, hey. I'm Amanda. I teach here.
Was there something you wanted to discuss right now? Or you just kind of want to watch and...
Just hanging out.
All right. All right. So, um, do we have any board correspondence?
Joe?
Yeah, yeah.
Was that for everybody in terms of discussing?
Yeah, yeah. I said, you know, just introduce yourself and then let me know if there's something you want to bring up right now, or if there's, you know, are you just here to kind of observe and maybe add something later?
No, I'm definitely here to have some input. So we had our school board meeting last night and, you know, we talked about the three and a half and then the 10 or the 20 in terms of equalized pupils allowable decline according to Act 46. So I read Act 46 again last night, cover to cover, and...
Yeah, wow. You're way ahead of probably a lot of the people in the room.
So I know that Brad sent an email stating that it looks like Leland and Gray would be in that 10% category in terms of equalized pupils, but, I mean, unless Act 46 is incorrect, which I don't think it is, it clearly states, and this will take a second, but I'm going to read what it says. Hang on. If I can get there. And I'll tell you what section I'm looking at. Section 23, it talks about declining enrollment and transition. First part of it is kind of the whole doomsday information about in year one, in fiscal year 2017, the district's equalized pupils shall in no case be less than 90% of the district's equalized pupils in the previous year. And in fiscal year 2018, the district equalized pupils shall in no case be less than 80% of the district's equalized pupils in the previous year. So that's kind of the scary part. But then if you read that in section two, C, right below that, it says, "Notwithstanding the provisions of subsections A and B of this section, if a district is actively engaged in merger discussions with one or more other districts regarding the formation of a regional education district," and we are, we have been, "or other form of unified school, union school district pursuant to 16 VSA Chapter 11, then section 22 of this act shall apply to the district in fiscal year 2018," which is exactly what we're discussing, "and after, and each of the dates in subsection B of this section shall be adjusted accordingly." So, back to section 22. For purposes of the calculation under this section, a district's equalized pupils shall in no case be less than 96 and one-half percent of the actual number of equalized pupils in the district in the previous year prior to making any adjustment under this subsection. That is absolutely and clearly the law according to Act 46. And I would definitely recommend getting some legal advice on this as opposed to...I know Brad James is our financial guru, but I think this clearly states that we're held at the 96 and a half. I mean, really, for what other reason would we be going through the process, the exploratory committees, the study committees? That was one of the things that we talked about from day one, was here are some of the benefits of going through the Act 46 process, and one of them was hold harmless, the three and a half percent. So I don't know how we got to this where it's suddenly, okay, there's a transition. No, you're no longer the three and a half percent category. You're now at 10, and then you will be at 20. So that's all I've got to say about that.
Okay. So I think some of what you talked about is going to be addressed by Lori.
Yeah, it's my understanding...I read that too. In fact, I have it highlighted right here. And questioned Brad on that. And then I questioned some other business managers that have read the law and have been involved in this. And basically, if you look down in the repeal section, phantom students go away, whether you're in a merger or not. As of fiscal year 2021, July 1, 2020, they go away.
Right.
And this is part of a step-down process, is what has been explained to me over three years.
It doesn't say that in the law.
I can see where you say that. Like I said, I have it highlighted. This is what I've been...
Have we gotten a legal opinion? Are you saying you've got that from other business managers? Have we talked to a lawyer about that?
No.
We just got the email.
Right. We get this Friday night at 10 o'clock. I spent the weekend reading the Act 46, and that's as far as I've gotten so far.
I don't think there's any leg to stand on.
I moved in.
Okay, so...
I'm not a lawyer.
So Howie moves that we get a lawyer?
Get our attorney to look at this and find out if this was being interpreted correctly.
Do we need to make a motion about that?
The motion's made. It can either get seconded or not, and then we can vote on it. I would assume that we would have that done without needing to make a motion, but the motion is made, so...is there a second? Discussion?
Will there be a second?
Yes, Bob, I'm in second.
Thank you.
I would assume that you guys would have, you know, legal advice on this before we just roll over and take it, right?
You can definitely get that.
Absolutely.
You know, there's still a lot of discussion. This is extremely new information. Brad James is an attorney, isn't he? No? AOE, I thought he was AOE's attorney. But, I mean, there will be discussion back and forth. Anyway, anything else? Anybody else want to say anything?
Let's talk about timeline.
Well, let's...
Before we vote, because I want to know what that means, what this vote actually would mean for us making decisions. And I know we have a timeline that we have to meet unless we have an annual meeting. So I guess I'd just would like clarification on that.
So timeline for the entire budget process?
Mm-hmm. And how this vote will impact timeline.
How quickly we could get this in front of an attorney?
I mean, since we can't get it today...
Right.
What does the full timeline look like? I mean, we had a tentatively scheduled second meeting.
That doesn't mean you can get an answer tomorrow, though.
Oh, no.
No.
But I mean, I can start the process.
So do we move forward without that tonight? I guess I'm just trying to understand what the impact of this vote means.
All the information that...
Well, the motion is a little vague in terms of like, do we have to get the attorney's opinion before we move forward with the budget process anymore? Or do we just retain one so that we can, you know, ultimately fight the good fight while we move forward with the best information we have?
That's what I want to clarify.
I didn't make...who made the motion, right?
I made the motion, and my motion is just to get an attorney's opinion, as far as I took it. So how it affects our, you know, we could still continue to plan based on, you know, what the ruling is from the DOE at the moment while we have an attorney look at it. I think that, you know, if we, turns out that they're wrong, we have more money. And if it turns out they're right, then we did what we were supposed to do with the budget we were allocating.
I just think it's important that's clarified.
All right. So that's enough clarification. It's not going to affect the timeline at all. Anything else? Any other discussion?
Do we need a motion to actually facilitate this process?
I don't think so.
There's no board action that needs to take place for this to happen. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So why are we doing this?
The motion was made.
We can direct without actually having to make a motion and pass it. I think we need to get clear on what we're doing here.
Well, I made the motion, it was seconded, so we can vote. You can vote it down, you can vote it all.
Yeah, the motion was made. There's nothing we can do. It can either be drawn or we can, you know, vote it down. And if there's no more discussion, we'll go for the vote. All in favor of the motion to...what exactly was it, Peter?
It was to get advice from the attorney.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to get advice from an attorney? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Sounds like one nay and the rest ayes. Abstentions?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. So, let's try and get our way back to the agenda just a little bit here. Al, everything you want to talk about comes in just a second as soon as we get to the budget. I just wanted to see if we have any board correspondence. No? Okay. I know you...and then new business, I don't think we have anything new, do we? I think that it has to be brought, so we're now back to the budget. I guess, you know, I don't know if everybody's even seen your email, Lori. I think you should just start with, you know, whatever you want to present and, you know, we can make our decisions based on that.
So does everybody have a copy?
Does anybody need handouts?
Sorry, there are maybe two there. I only attached the Brad James email. Thank you. I just want to quickly talk about the...I don't want to dwell on the past, but I just want to talk a little bit about the past year in '16 so that...because for the last week, in my head, it doesn't make sense that we would have to go below last year's budget, right, based on the first numbers that we had. And so I did some more research, and, you know, a couple of things happened. At this time last year when you presented a budget, you were actually over the cap. And the reason you were over the cap is because some offsetting revenues were included that were not supposed to be included. It's the Career Center revenues. So that artificially dropped your cost per student. And then when you look at the tuition budget, for instance, for fiscal year '16 was, the actual was 803, and the budget was 852. So, you know, we're not gaining students, even tuition students for that matter. So that was overstated by a certain amount of money. So I think that you were not as drastically as you are right now, but you were over the cap last year as well. Now, there were some exclusions that brought you under the cap. So some of those exclusions were...one in particular is principal and interest on your capital loan. That, we retired that loan this year. So that's not going to be an exclusion that's going to help you for '18. So I just wanted to talk about that a little bit because it, in my mind, it didn't make sense that we had to drop below last year's budget. But in reality, you were over as well. So now we can move on to '18 and talk about that. So the first... Does everybody understand what Lori's saying? Because that's really important. Because that gives us some leeway. That clarifies a lot of information, and we need to have that as a baseline to start from moving forward for this year, in my opinion. Right. Right. It definitely clarified it in my mind. It made me feel like, okay, I understand where we started from, where we ended up, where we're ending. Exactly. Okay. So then we presented, the first budget we presented to you, I think, was the 8.5, or I'm sorry, 6.5 million dollar budget. And that was based on the 296 that we were all hoping for. And that was going to bring you somewhere in the vicinity of $1,000 over the threshold. So, yeah, we talked about that. And we talked about what you charged us with what we needed to do to get under the threshold. That was the charge. So Bob went to the drawing board and did an awesome job. And I think he's...did you pass these out? Okay. So we have some reductions here that are leading to this budget. I'll go to the computer, sorry. So then we got, I said Friday night, 10 o'clock, got the email from Brad about the 272 count that came through. And that obviously put you in a much different place. Now, I have prepared a little document there that talks about equalized students. And it's just sort of a refresher of how equalized students are figured. And it's not just a Leland and Gray problem, right? I think that everybody understands this is really a pre-K through 12 issue of these phantom students that have been built in over time since 1999.
1999.
Was the Act 68 law, right?
Well, it was after, yeah, after Act 68.
And so since then, everybody's been held at this cap, this 3.5 cap. You can't reduce more than 3.5%. But that, if you look at the sheet, creates, the examples that I've put out there, creates phantom students. And so that's what is happening, you know, with Brad's interpretation of the law, is it's stepping down the phantom students so that eventually those go away and you're actually getting funds for what the actual equalized people is, are. So does that help to explain it a little bit?
Does everybody understand that? That's a really important concept.
Really important. Instead of just falling off the cliff and saying they're gone next year, they're slowly...
Yeah. By fiscal year 2021, phantom students will no longer exist. Hold harmless will no longer exist.
So they won't...
That is definitely written into the law.
It's important to...I don't know if you said this or not, but the way it was calculated before was that the three and a half percent was based on the three and a half percent reduction years before, so it was accumulating. The phantom students were snowballing, which is what the...
That's an extremely important point.
Which is why the adjustment in the law was made around it, because it was even more phantom.
Right. At some point, you have to get back to really counting.
Because it was calculated on the lower...
So taxpayers have been artificially paying a lower tax rate than the students...
Spending.
You know, that they're paying for, really. So that's what leads to that 276 number. Okay? So I did tell you in your email, since that email, we've had a couple little changes, which are good changes. And one of them is Mary Martin called me today and she found a tuition student, so that was good. We could add one more tuition student to the revenues.
Just wandering around the halls.
And then Brad emailed the next version, which was 276, so why not by two? And this is by no means done yet. I mean, this is only version two. It can go to version six, so, you know...but I don't think there's going to be a lot more students unless the law is not interpreted correctly. Okay. So, talking through the budget. Do you want to talk about the cuts, or you want me to...
So last week, this time, you guys charged me...
I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Yes.
Sure. I just want to make sure everyone understands about this one thing that is so important that we...because we, at Leland and Gray, when we were talking about the budget last year, we talked about phantom students. I think we had like one phantom student or something like that, which was like the first time we'd had one, I think. But it was a time when our, you know, our enrollment was declining, and that was to be expected. But this is not specific to Leland and Gray. I know you said it, but I want to state it again because I think it's really important. It's a pre-K-12 system that we're looking at, and it's phantom students across the five towns that are impacting this calculation now.
That is correct. Right.
Okay. So the only way to have known this was to have looked at it across the five towns over the last few years, knowing what was coming for us to be prepared for this, and we didn't do that.
Mm-hmm. Right. And it's very important to be looking ahead at this.
Right. I guess that's sort of my point.
The declining enrollment is not stopping, and then the phantom students go away. So, you know, it's a double whammy. And it's really important that we get through this budget season, and then I really would love to sit down with a group of people from this, from your board, and plan a four-year budget. I mean, we have to be looking out.
Yep.
I mean, it's... I'm on board for that. Okay. With the situation that we're in now, it just seems like this has been coming and it's here, but it's not, this is the beginning. It's not really the, where it's going to end up. And if we think this is hard, I have a feeling that the snowball that's headed our way, we have a lot of work ahead of us, so, yeah, not to interrupt, but it's, this is only the beginning. Right. So I think it's really, it would be prudent of us to really look at a four-year budget.
One question. Sure. When this law progresses to its final state where there are no more phantom students, does that mean that our budget will be fluctuating precisely with the student count? That there will be no, these 10 students, man, that's going to be, you know...
It's a great question.
And we're going to have to deal with that on a yearly basis?
Well, there is a two-year average. So ADM is a two-year average. That's where you start. You start with that two-year average, and then it's weighted according to the paper I gave you. And that's where you end up with your equalized pupils.
But you are correct. There will be no other protections around shifts. Of course, there's no protections on shifts high, which is good, but there will be no downside protection, except for the two-year average.
So if you really...
So multi-year budgeting is going to be incredibly important, to look at what our demographics are, to look at ourselves in the pre-K through 12 system.
Attracting students.
Absolutely.
Right. Sorry, Bob.
All right. So you tasked me with finding 300 last week, which was the amount that would have taken us to the phantom threshold. And so this page, it looks like this, has a box with some things on it. Walk you through this list to get you to your total 300. One of the first, the first obvious one was the removal of the assistant principal position, which was an add in the budget for the school this year. With that coming out, though, one of the things, and I've described this in the text below, what I would do is I would close the planning room and re-staff that person as a dean of students. So I have asked for a little bit more money to put back in to help make that a reality. The next one, in talking about sabbaticals that have been requested, they're still sort of on the table, I guess you could say, if it's proof to consider. You know, Bill and I talked a lot about that and recommending that that be something we consider as leaves of absence rather than as sabbaticals, so that the healthcare costs are not something that we would have to incur. The next four or five lines, getting from four through eight, are all just some discretionary funds from the budget that I think we can reduce. Line nine, I asked Marty to take a look at the co-curricular budget to see if there's anything in there that he felt he could reduce. And we talked a little about the snowboarding program, which is a VPA sanctioned event, but it's on probation with the VPA, which means that there's not a lot of schools doing it still. And if they have student schools dropping out, or if they don't gain more schools, they could actually remove the VPA sanction from that. So I made a couple of calls and found out there's at least one other high school near, removing it near budget process as well. So it seems logical that this will probably not be a VPA sanctioned event moving forward. So reducing that, which includes stipends for a coach and some transportation costs, seemed like a logical approach from the co-curricular. And then getting to the two big ones, we have in our music department a 1.83 FTEs, music instruction. So it's my recommendation that we riff the 1.83 and get down to one hole. And we currently have five science teachers in the budget, so it's my recommendation to riff one and get to four, thus bringing us to a total of 300. With the music program, you guys want to know what impact. I mean, the snowboarding team, obviously, there's an impact on kids who snowboard. It's not a huge number, but it's definitely, there's an impact there. The music reduction, I wrote that it's difficult to predict what the actual impact will be. One strong restriction I have is that we will not be able to offer the private pull-out lessons on instruments that we've been offering and has been tradition here for a long, long time. And that we may lose an elective, perhaps two, general music for the middle school or technology music for the high school, or maybe both, would be the casualty, is one person to take on both middle and high school chorus and band. So that was the impact there. As there's only one section of band and chorus for each high school in most of the landways, there's not really an impact with class size. In fact, we would like them to be bigger, so that's not really a concern. The science reduction, again, we haven't started building a schedule. It's very early in the process. The reason that identified science was that with, we were already in the budget, had talked about not replacing an English teacher who was leaving, English teacher slash literacy coach. And we had talked about taking out the 1.67 math that had been added in for this fiscal year after adoption of the budget. So this reduction in science would bring science, English, math, and social studies all at the same staffing level of four, total, seven to 12. So it kind of equalizes those... So it kind of equalizes those four core subjects. I don't know what the impact will be, it might not be any on kids, there might be maybe one less elective, bigger class sizes, but it's hard to really predict at this point. So. And then at the bottom, what I tried to do, I know, I was thinking of how I did this, was I tried to list, so, last year, this year, and this proposed budget year, to try to show the number of actual teachers we have, the equivalent FTEs of those people, the equalized pupil count that we've used, and then trying to develop an index. And I want to be cautioning you, this is not a class size number, this is not a teacher or student ratio, this is just an index to use to measure, all right? So don't think that this means anything as far as a classroom setting. All I'm trying to do is show you equalized pupil count per FTE. So it's really a meaningless number, but it gives you an index. And you can see, with the staffing, with the equalized pupil count went down for this fiscal year, FY17, you actually increased the FTE of the staff. So that brought down that ratio from 9.9 to 9.2. The number of 276 that Laurie's given us, plus the reductions that I've put forth in the first draft, plus these additional ones, would bring us back up to 9.7. So, so speaks to how I was talking about having staff reduce when students reduce. So, it's an attempt to demonstrate that correlation. Questions?
Thank you. What's the actual pupil count?
The actual pupil count. Right now is 311.
That's what we reported this year.
I would like to know, what exactly is general music and the technology of music, and how many students are in those classes?
So general music is part of the middle school rotation for exploratories. So what that means is that every seventh and eighth grader has a rotation for a quarter long, where they go to a general music class, much like an elementary general music class.
Okay.
There's some instrument, there's some singing, there's theory, music theory, that kind of stuff.
So that basically gets an instrument into a student's hands that maybe has always wanted to try one and never had the opportunity.
Who hasn't picked it up in the past, correct.
Okay.
So it would, and again, and I'm not saying it would definitely end that program, but it certainly has potential that it would, just because the staff would be spread out with too many different things to offer. The technology music is a high school class that was developed, and I think it's evolved over the years, but the idea is for kids, is non-musicians, really, accessing music theory slash using technology, soundboards, development of electronic composing, those kinds of things, to get kids who are typically non-musicians into the musical world.
And how many students are we talking, would be taken?
Well, the, the, the general music would be every middle school student, gets it for a quarter, so that's the entire middle school right now. The tech of music, I'm going to guess and say, 15 to 20 a year. I think we run two sections of it, one the fall, one the spring. I could be wrong, are any music teachers in the audience?
No, but it is.
Does that sound all right?
Yeah.
And there's, and there are typically eight to 10 kids.
But we would still be offering basic band, chorus.
Band, chorus, high school, middle school.
Jazz band, a cappella.
Well, those things are, those things are extras, those are part of the co-curricular contract, they're stipended positions in addition to, those are not part of the school day. Those things are not part of this reduction.
Okay.
Any else? No other questions from the board? Anybody in the audience? Al?
Yeah, just to kind of get grounded, if we could do some baseline numbers on top line numbers. So if you look in the back page, comparison year-over-year, FY17 versus FY18, what was the education spend? So, whatever the budget was minus offsetting revenues for both this year and for last year, FY17 and '18.
Let's defer to my colleague.
So, in fiscal year 17, your expenses were 7.1 million. You see that there, right?
No, I'm talking about, so, in order to get the education spend, so what would that be, minus the offsetting revenues?
Well, it was reported as 4,805,8. It should have been, actually, I'll give you that number, should have been 4,900, okay?
Okay. And this year?
5106, based on this budget, presented budget.
Okay. And this year, the equalized pupil, per pupil spending is max is 17,365, is that right?
17,386.
17,386. And the equalized pupils that we showed last year was 311?
No, 296.53.
296.53.
And this year's calculation is 276.39.
And that's at that 10% reduction?
So, the budget that we presented on the sixth was 6,500, as I said, and then this one is 6,200, so the actual reduction is $323,000. The extra 23 was in career center, a reduction in career center FTEs, based on a six semester average. Those numbers have not come out yet, so that may change, but I looked back three years and took an average of those three years, just to have a number to plug in there, and it was less than what was budgeted last year. So that brings your first pupil spending to 18,476, which is still over the cap by $5,000.
Sure. Cheryl?
Sure. I appreciate Bob's challenge over this past week to come down, to make these reductions, and there's quite significant impact. One piece that's missing from there, and it sort of seems like it's disappeared, and not necessarily a cut, is the French program, because with Sarah Burchay leaving, who is one half of the French teaching team, and the possibility of Ruth Ann Dunn being accepted for her sabbatical, which she is the other half, if both of those two teachers are gone, what happens to the French program? And so, there's nothing cut, but there's nothing in place for it to carry on. So I guess I'm curious, what's the status of Leilina Gray continuing to have a French program, or losing a French program? And how do you folks feel about that?
And so, what I did is, I didn't include that, because it was sort of, it's contingent on what happens with the sabbatical request and whether or not she receives it. If, if the, with this cut for science in, if she is gone, then the impact would be, there would be no French program offered through direct instruction, and we'll come back to that in a second. If she was here, then I think we'd have to make some decisions moving forward around what the enrollment numbers look like, and what we were doing in the middle school, and what, how that's going to impact where we go with French moving forward. If she's not here, then we won't have a licensed teacher. So there's nothing in the budget for that, as a single language department, it would really just come out of science, which may or may not be possible, depending on who's here and what other sections we would have. Let me come back to where I was going initially, which was, I did reach out to Jeff Renard, who is the director of the Vermont Virtual Learning Collaborative, which is the online program that you guys authorized me adding, beginning of the school year, and they do offer French through that program. So our students would have access to a Vermont licensed French instructor. Clearly, doing it online is different than doing it in a classroom setting, I think Carol will agree, but it is an option, it will provide access to French instruction through online. So regardless of where we go, we could, students will be able to access that.
What is the French enrollment in middle school like currently?
Well, the middle school, it's pretty decent, I would say, there's probably 18 to 20 in each grade. In the high school, it's significantly lower. So, that's why it depends on what we do with the middle school model, and how we, whether or not we continue to do languages in the middle school or not for high school credit, we have, that's something that we get, that, we've had meetings scheduled to discuss it, and they keep getting bumped for emergency staff being stuck with the budget, so. But that's something that we do have to address and figure out what we're going to do with that.
And certainly for the seventh graders, they're in French I, and that's a real loss for them to not be able to complete French.
They're in 1A, which means they would still need the other part of French I, that's something.
To get any kind of credit.
To get A, yep. So we have to look at that, how we would deal with that if that was the case.
Patty?
And, I would imagine, but I'm not a teacher, so I don't know, that possibly, it would be easier for a higher-level French student to do an online course, as opposed to the beginners doing an online course?
Yep, I think it's a definitely a better option for the kids who are in three and four now, to finish four and five, than it would be, I think, what Kelly points out, for the 1B, or whatever those, whatever the level those kids might be at. Because of the age, because of the level of language learning, and just their skill around being able to do an online course as well, so a lot of factors.
I think losing the French for those middle school kids would be a shame.
But it's the exact same conversation we had last year, the exact same conversation for the seventh graders going into eighth grade. It's just to remember where we were at a year ago.
Right.
Two years, was that two years ago?
It was two, yeah.
We have.
And just an additional piece, when they do get into the high school, as Bob mentioned, that there's significant numbers in the middle school. In part, those numbers lower in the high school, it's not a lack of interest, it's scheduling. There's always, and we've gotten, we've heard this before, so, I just want you to understand that it's, for all of us in the world languages, once we get into competition with AP English or AP Chemistry, or any of the other, or just the scheduling, kids can't fit into their schedules, and so, years go by, and, but that, the numbers don't always indicate a lack of interest.
No, well, that's, I think the scheduling has been a challenge here historically, but I would temper that a little bit by saying that the, in the middle school, the kids were required to enroll in a language, they could pick which one. At the high school level, there is no overall language requirement, so students aren't required to take one. So that would account for some drop in enrollment as well.
Right.
Would the online course alleviate the scheduling problem? If it's online, does it take, plays a certain time?
It's asynchronous.
What's that?
It's asynchronous, meaning that kids can take it whenever, they can do it from home.
So it may work out better to have an online course?
Yeah. Emily, I got Dan, and you. All right, Dan?
I'm sorry I'm late, I was at a concert at Wyndham. And just a quick answer to your question about, if there's no general music instruction, and kids don't get those instruments in their hands, what that will mean is the band will go away, because people don't miraculously start playing instruments later in life, they need that introduction to get them on. You know, Vermont is clearly facing a demographic challenge, and we are here as well, you know, our numbers are dwindling, but it seems like, when they come to these board meetings, it seems like it's a money board, and I'm waiting for the school part. I don't hear our kids in this conversation, other than a number, you know, how much the state is going to allow us to spend on this kid, and how much it's going to cost this, and what the cap is. So, Vermont has faced this in the past, when the bottom fell out of the Marina Wool market, and people discovered that they could plow broad without having to mine stones first, everybody left. And Vermont was empty, and 85% of the state which was open turned into trees, and we were going back into primeval forests, but somehow, people drifted back, and we became a populous state again, and we have a population. So, it is true, right now, there's a, there's a drop in our population. To think that that is a permanent condition is not based in any kind of reality. There's, there's no reason, no kind of logic that can say, no one will ever come back to Vermont. So we're looking at a situation, we don't know how temporary it is, but it's a temporary situation. So I think the question we should be asking ourselves is, do we place any value on our children? Right now, our schools are not only instructing kids, we're not only teaching kids to do the things they need to do to get a graduate, to graduate, we are also dealing with major social ills and issues. We have kids, you know, one of the most successful learning programs we have at Leilina Gray? Getting kids to a dentist, which we had to podium up money to figure out how to pay for kids to go to a dentist, so they wouldn't be unable to learn, because their bowels were hurting. We put food in their stomachs, because not all kids can come to the school and have enough food to eat. But yet, when we talked in La Pille, or we talked, we talked to legislators, and we talked about that guy, you know, oh, I know that situation, you're just going to have to think outside the box, because in the past, it didn't cost that much to, to our kids. We are in a situation right now, where if we want to give up on our kids, then by all means, let's cut $300,000 out of this budget and let, because what's going to happen? I will guarantee you, if you do this, and you just like go by the cap, you cut your $300,000, you cut music, so the music program tanks, you cut French, what you will do is you will guarantee that this school will be closed. I don't know if it'll be in five years, or seven years, or two years, you will guarantee that people will not move into this town, because the school does not have what they need for their kids. When that happens, your property tax values go down, your property tax rate goes down, everything tanks. So, if you want to have any future of descending towns, then you need to be willing to stand up for our school. If you want to have any interest in our kids in this valley, doing something more than just suffering under economic and social ills, then you need to be willing to invest in this school. And when we have had the votes, that were, when we had budget votes, and even when we lost the budget vote, and we went to the people, and we talked about what the need was, and we explained the need, people have consistently voted for this school and our elementary schools, they have voted for these budgets, even though in towns and stuff, we've had, we've had our troubles, historically, for a long time. For us to give, what you, essentially, if you go with this cut, you're giving up. And I don't understand why we would want to give up on our kids when a time, right now, which is such, so fraught with danger, so fraught with, you know, the opioid crisis, poverty, abuse, trauma, we are in a, in a state of crisis, we need to be wrapping ourselves around our kids and around our communities. Our communities and our schools are our strength. And if you want, because of an idea about a tax, somebody having to pay higher taxes in a state that has property tax rebates for people up to, I don't know what the number is, if it's 70, 90,000 dollars, if you are truly a poor person in the state of Vermont, when the property taxes go up, you get some relief, substantial relief, from the state of Vermont. And that, the more you make, the less, the less relief you get. So, we are not, when, when we were talking about budgets, we are talking about bean counters and their numbers and their words. And we have a, we have a new governor, and, and one of the reasons, he's, he's a guy who's not interested in spending a lot of extra money, that's true. One of the main reasons he got elected, though, was because he was also not a big fan of Act 46, and, and the obligatory concept of Act 46. He's interested in easing up some of these deadlines, he's trying to figure out, as are many senators at, in the state level, they're trying to figure out how to deal with this to make it a little more equitable, so we don't have to lose our schools. Because mark my words, you are going down the path of losing our school. You know, the school I came from tonight, Wyndham, by all accounts, should not exist, little school, like 12 kids, two teachers, how could these kids ever learn? Like, I miss where you're at. They have some of the best performing kids, I play concerts in, you know, three or four elementary schools, I've done it for years and years. Wyndham consistently has one of the best group of kids, ready to learn, they do well, and when they come here in this school, just go down to the list of salutatorians, valedictorians, see how many kids from Wyndham are on that list. A tiny little school, that, school from the past, which has no place in modern America, is, is a stellar school, because people in that town care about it. The people in these towns care about this school, but I don't see the board caring about it. You know, I see the board talking about money, and I, and I, and I, you know, up in La Pille, that it's all about, we just have to face the facts, you know, it's, it's a, we just have to, we, we have no choice. Well, we do have a choice. We have a choice in this country to decide to invest in our children, or we have a choice to invest in ourselves and the things we want to buy. That seems to me like it'd be a very easy choice. I would urge this board to advocate for this school, advocate for these kids, figure out, you know, okay, we, there's more money than we can, maybe we should figure out a way to raise some money. Maybe we have to, as pathetic and ridiculous it is, maybe we have to have something so the school can raise $10,000, or, you know, some kind of campaign where we're reaching out to wealthy individuals, or we washing cards, I don't know what it is, but to automatically think that we can just cut our way out of this mess, and we're not destroying the school, is not true. You're kidding yourself.
Patty, I believe you were next.
Um, no.
True?
As a member of this board and the Act 46 Study Committee, I can assure you and the public that we have had many, many conversations about students. I believe it's probably the first thing I say every time I speak. So I, I would challenge that, you know, this board doesn't care about the students of, of this school and the district because we spend a lot of time looking at what is best for our students. Unfortunately, there is a financial reality to operating a school district. We have to be able to provide for the education of the kids, but we also have to be able to provide for the taxpayers a reasonable bill associated with that. We have to be responsible on both sides. So as a board, we do have difficult decisions to make and we are considering the students and we're taking the advice of our administration in where, what areas we can in fact cut and what areas we shouldn't be cutting. And that's the work that the board is doing right now.
Thanks. Before we go too far down the path, talking about, you know, the cuts that Bob has suggested, proposed and, and some of what we've done, realize here that we're still almost eleven hundred dollars above the spending threshold with these cuts. We need to discuss what tolerance we have for going forward with this budget or do we need more cuts? And how deeply can we cut or do we want to cut? And what are we willing to take to our towns? You know, to get under the spending threshold, what, it's, it's now somewhere around six hundred thousand, like ten percent of our entire budget? To get under the spending threshold? Laurie, you have?
Well, without these cuts, it's another three hundred with the cuts that we've already made, so six seventy-six was.
Assuming we.
Assuming we keep everything that Bob's already said we need, we, we can do. It's another three something, right? Three oh one, to get down under the spending threshold again. And at our last meeting, our direction on looking at this budget was that we did not feel comfortable going back to our towns with, over the spending threshold for the double taxation. And we said, go get under. Bob's done it. None of this is, is pleasant, but it's well thought out. You can see that it impacts the fewest number of kids and there's every, every one of these things, there's a contingency for how we're going to do it and how we're going to keep trying to offer as much as we possibly can to our children facing the economic realities. But we have another, we have another big problem. Do, what, what are we going to do with the new information, the, the new equalized spending? You know, do we say, go back and try again? Do we tell them to get under the threshold? Do we, now, now that if we've decided that we cannot possibly operate under the threshold, then, you know, make the best, make the best stab you can? I mean, we need to, we need to give them some direction so that they can come back if we're going to send them back again. Just wanted to put that out there because I think that's going to take a little time to discuss, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I think we need to explain to the general public, what is going to happen when we go over that? How is that going to affect your tax bill? I mean, does it automatically go into the school part of your tax bill? Do we feel it here with the percentage of the increase or decrease?
Can you?
So, so the first thing that happens when you're over the cap is there are some exclusions that can come off of that. And, and I don't know any of those right now because those are going to come from the state. They give you that number and I double check them. So last year, like I said, there was enough exclusions to get you under the cap. So that, that has to happen first. And then the next number is the yield that is put forth by the tax commissioner, which was ten thousand seventy-six. So of all things being equal, we'll say, you didn't have any reduction in expenses or revenue or increases in expenses and you were at the cap. So the cap is seventeen three eighty-six divided by the yield. Basically, you're talking a dollar seventy-three, right? On a hundred percent CLA. See, all these numbers have to come in before we can get to a real number. Last year, the tax rate on the, the three-year comparison was a dollar sixty-five was estimated. And I think you guys came in at like a dollar seventy-two. So, you know, you can see from the time that this meeting happens to the time when you actually get taxed, it can change. But it's significant with the penalty. So the penalty is added to your per pupil cost, which is the double taxation. So that's where you get the increase in your tax rate. So, you know, looking at this right here, if you're a thousand dollars over the cap, you add that to the eighteen thousand, you're at nineteen five now. Divided by the ten oh seventy-six is a dollar ninety-four and you were at a dollar seventy-two.
And we didn't get penalized last year, even though we were over because of the threshold.
Right. Because of the exclusions. And the exclude, some exclusions will drop this.
When do we know about exclusions?
I'm hoping in by the fifteenth or by the next meeting, I'm hoping there'll be something. I, I know that Brad was, I've emailed him, I know that Emily has spoke to him about the timeline for, for Leland Gray. That we're like the earliest in the state to vote.
One of them.
One of them, so.
Newfane or any of those?
We, uh, yeah, Newfane and Leland Gray, we need to get this fixed.
It's, it's really hard to work on all these assumptions.
We know there's one exclusion that we don't have this year that we had last year though.
Correct, which is the interest.
Interest and.
Principal interest.
So already, we're unable.
You had some?
Yeah, so is there a way that at some point you can give us, like a, because Frank used to do a thing where he'd give us kind of an estimate of how many dollars per household might result from different fluctuations in the budget?
Okay.
And I don't know how he did it.
Yeah, you had asked me in an email about that and.
Because a dollar amount means more to people, I think, than one point nine four or something, you know, because.
So are you, you're saying like on a hundred thousand dollar house?
Yes.
All right, I will agree with those. I mean, I'd like to get a little more information from the state before I start growing out those numbers. Because you, you know, people get those numbers in their head and then they see the reality, which happens months, months later.
Yep, I have another, I have a little list of questions. It's little list, three questions. How is, where, we've had a deficit, we've been running a deficit and we had a transportation issue last year. Where is all that in here? Have we taken care of the deficit?
So you do not have a deficit going into eighteen. Um, the audit report is not finalized, but I'm in constant contact with them and barring any major issues at the very end, looking like you're going to have like a five thousand dollar surplus, not a lot, but, but that can be applied to this as well.
That's very good news.
That is good news.
Yeah.
I will caution however, that seventeen is going to make that even.
Yep.
So going into nineteen, you may, right, you may have a deficit going into nineteen.
Because we've been working on that for years and we haven't been able to.
Right.
And then, did I have another one? Oh, I just had how this is all affecting, because I assume there's effects on the elementary schools and their budgets. And we don't know, I read Jamaica's minutes, but I don't, I couldn't really get an idea of how much their budget has changed or whatever, but that's always something we've tried to consider as well because we'll vote on that at town meeting and that's all on top of what we do and they do. And I'm sure they're suffering from this phantom student thing.
They're suffering the most, actually.
Yep, I bet.
It's like, Emily, you had a question?
I just wanted to shift for a second to what we look like next year because as we're trying to make decisions now, it's so easy to stay caught in the moment. But if we know what we're facing next year and the year after, and the year after, I mean, we've all seen our, our graph that shows that thing, that shows our numbers. If we're looking at a further reduction next year, that should impact the conversation we're having right now because we're just going to, we, if we don't address it now, it's going to compound down the road. Am I right?
Yes, you are right.
And this says to me, there's no relief until twenty twenty.
Which is why you're talking about a four-year plan. We know these numbers are, and they're reasonable estimates and we need to, you know, we need to get something now and then literally look at a three and four-year plan. So that we can distribute this as we, as we change the face of what we have to do, given the financial realities, if it makes sense.
Right, yeah, I mean, this, this data was taken off of this year's census that was sent into the state. And how many seventh graders were coming in from the sending towns and how many seventh graders possibly could be coming in from tuition towns?
You flatlined the tuition number.
Yeah.
Is that, because there's really no way to do that, okay.
Right.
But we've been fairly accurate with this chart in the last number of years. I mean, we, we have no reason to believe that this is going to fluctuate greatly. It will fluctuate some clearly, but it, there's no reason to believe that it's going to be a huge change.
So the, one of the conversations that I had with Brad, he said, you know, they expected, and you, you, you know, we would know this as well for all of your legislation, is that they expected the, the enrollments to flatline much earlier and they didn't. They continued to drop.
So I will just, if I can, just, just say one thing, I'm looking at, the Joint Fiscal Office has a, has a graph on here and it's showing the exact same kind of decline coming through the state of Vermont that mimics this quite clearly. In fact, it's still going down till twenty twenty-one. And the steepest decline is behind us, but there's still a pretty significant decline and it really starts to flatten out and maybe even, it really is quite similar to this. And it goes out to twenty twenty-five that's showing. So we really don't, everybody's predicting the same sort of thing. It's all pointing at the same.
One sec, Dan?
Quick question, you're not willing, I, I can understand why you don't want to go to taxpayers and say, you know, we need to raise taxes, this is actually going to, you're actually going to pay more on your tax bill. But it's not fair if you don't say to them, but if we do what we're going to do, your high school is doomed. I mean, that's, that's part of the equation and that's the part you're not talking about.
We're talking about how it's not going to be doomed.
But the thing, the thing is, is if you cut these programs and you make the school to the, cut to the extent that we don't offer this, we don't offer that, forget about music, forget about this, forget about that, you will not get the kids to come to this place. So it's, it's, it's a death by a thousand cuts. You could offer people a choice. You say, look, here's what we'd like to do to keep our school, this will cost you, if you have a hundred, for every hundred thousand dollars in your home, this will cost you a hundred bucks. Are you willing to do this? This is what we'll have. And this is what we'll have if we don't do that. This is what you'll get in the school if we don't do that. And this is what the future of that school looks like. And you'd be true to what that future really looks like. We can't just pretend that we could keep taking things away and somehow we'll stumble through and educate our children sufficiently and get people to come to our school. We can't continue to pretend that. We have to be straight up.
Yeah, and, um, go ahead.
Dan, I, I hear what you're saying and we all understand that here. Our job here is the money, pretty much. That's this, this is a budget meeting. I am the Wyndham rep to this board, so I know the Wyndham Elementary School really well. And I'm glad that you pointed out that with just two teachers teaching multi-age classrooms, Wyndham gets tremendous results from our kids. Where I disagree with you is that when you say that a three hundred thousand dollar cut is going to lead to the end of this school, I cannot agree with that. Just like you pointed out, once upon a time, there were a lot of people in Vermont and then they all left and there were big cuts. They didn't keep all those little one-room schoolhouses, they didn't keep all the teachers. We have to, to make this school viable, we have to keep staffing lined up with the enrollment. There's no, we have no other choice, it doesn't mean the end of the school.
You do have a choice to ask people to pay higher taxes, you, you don't want to take that choice, I can understand, but it is a choice.
Well, we have to get this budget passed and people are only going to, you know, if our, if our cost per pupil is, you know, four thousand dollars higher than the neighboring schools, then the taxpayers are going to say, well, why not just close the school and send the kids to the other schools?
They are?
You know?
And they don't want to send their kids to Verano Grove from Worsbro.
Well, we have to keep that, we have to keep our, our costs in line with the student population. We don't like doing this, no, it's, it's, it's terrible to have to cut stuff. But we are losing students, we can't keep losing students and keep all the teachers, we just can't. And it's not, and I, where I disagree with you is that this is a crisis. A crisis would be if we had a growing enrollment and had to cut teachers. That would be pretty awful. Fact is, we have less kids, we have to have less teachers. And it's a hard, it's a hard pill to swallow, but that's what it boils down to. We want to keep offering the same level of services to our kids. Just like the Wyndham Elementary School, the teachers at Leland Gray and the kids are going to have to figure out different ways of learning. We have the internet, we have online classes. It may turn out there, there will be more kids taking French in high school because they could fit it into their schedule with an online class. I don't, I agree with you that cutting the budget means the end of our school in any way. I think we can keep the important stuff here, we can keep offering our classes, we can keep this place going in line with the enrollment, the number of kids we have here.
Go ahead.
We do care about this school. I was a student here, I was in the band when the band had seventy-five to eighty percent of the student body involved in it. And I've seen how declining enrollment and scheduling has diminished what used to be a very vital part of this school. And I'm going to urge you to try to keep the general music because it gets those instruments into kids' hands that have maybe never had that outlet. Music is so important. If you take that away, it, it's, it's going to be, you're going to see those results in a lot of different ways in the school. I know we have things that we need to look at closely. Maybe if someone could do the technology of music as a winter activity, that might be an option. It's not going to be a full-time thing, but at least we'd still be providing it. I'm more than willing to work with the band department. I'm a drummer.
I know, we have to.
I, I mean, I, I'm willing to donate my time if that will help. I just think that it's very important to look at what we're going to be cutting or thinking about cutting. And music is very important and I hate to see that on there. I realize we've got to look at everything, but I think we need to see the implications of something like that.
We still have to go back, ladies and gentlemen, and really discuss what the next step is. You know, we're still talking about these cuts when there are three hundred thousand dollars more cuts that could be there. You know, we're being accused of not being willing to go to the taxpayers and ask for a tax increase. I'm not sure that I'm unwilling to do that. I, I'm not sure that it's not worth maybe going over the spending threshold. But I also don't want to sit there at, you know, three, maybe three hundred thousand. It's like, maybe there's a little more that we can find. There's, there's going to have to be some, you know, and as part of a four-year plan, we may have to lose even more or rearrange even more. But, you know, we need to, we need to really come up with the direction that we as a board want to give the administration for what they're going to do, unless we're willing to, you know, pass this budget, take this to our voters, which is possible.
You mean, take, so approve these three hundred thousand cut, in cuts, still take a budget to our voters, which is three hundred thousand over the threshold? Is that, is that what you're?
A thousand per student over the threshold. I'm saying that if that's what we're willing to do, then we don't have to talk about what we do as future direction. I, my suspicion is, is that we want to come somehow closer to the threshold rather than stay eleven hundred dollars per student over it. But, you know, again, I'm, I'm only one person, I have hands everywhere here, hang on now. Patty, I think you were first and Emily then Al.
Yeah, I, I would have nothing against seeing the possibilities. However, I had a serious problem when I looked online and did not see any of the budgets online. So there's no way that anybody out in the public has any information about this. And, and that I would not want to come to a next meeting without all the, all the different scenarios online, at the website, dates of meetings, it really out there because, I mean, nobody has any way to get a budget other than calling someone. And I was shocked because I was going to put a link on the Jamaica, and I know you're, it's a new administration so I'm not pointing any fingers, truly, I'm not. I felt bad because it's like, oh my God, I'm the internet guru, I should have looked and seen it not there because that's how I got on the board was.
These drafts are coming, these drafts are coming very, very late. I don't think anybody would have had this online, I mean, we got handed, this wasn't emailed to us.
Nothing's online. Nothing's online. There wasn't even anything on the webpage.
There wasn't a budget to put on.
There wasn't really anything to put on.
There were drafts. There were, there were earlier versions. There were earlier versions that could have been on, but this one was completed today.
No, I know, but I would like, I would like people to be able to see all the different versions and the rationale.
Has that happened in the past because?
Yes, we.
In the past, our draft budget has been up, you know, the board would get it and we would post it on the website so that the, the general public could get it.
And as it changed, it was, and rationales were put up and everything. Yep, like all of these things would be.
This typically happened for.
I think it happened, I'm pretty sure it happened last year.
I, I didn't.
It's okay, we just, you know, it's, it's easily corrected. You had something?
I was just going to say that, given.
And Al has something.
This. I just, it would be irresponsible not to ask what that extra $300, $300,000 cut looks like for us. I think we need to know because if we don't know, we're ignoring what the future is, is going to throw in our laps next year as well. So I, I would like to know what it's going to look like. I don't know what, what this board's going to decide, but I think we need to know.
Okay, Al?
So just for clarification, are we saying that you need an additional 300,000?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
On top of this.
On top of that to get under the threshold.
So if you're at 5106, and we need to drop, if, if we're going with the 276 on the, for the students equalized people, you need to drop 1,087 to get to the threshold, which by my calculations is 301,000, which I think you've already pretty much done, right?
No, that's an addition on top of, because the previous budget was 6.5 million.
There you go.
So, so you're looking at the current budget.
Right.
Right, so there was a previous.
Which has the 300,000.
Which has 300,000 cuts in it. And is still 1,100 per student.
And this afternoon, we found out we're 1,100 per student over.
Right.
Got it. Okay, so this is.
Because of the drop in the equalized people. We were basing everything off of last year's equalized people count of 296, the first time around.
Can I add a quick question?
Sure.
Al originally put forth this idea about challenging how this is laid out. Just for argument's sake, if, what would it look like if he was right?
131,000.
More?
More.
Instead of.
On top of this or on top of the?
No, he needs an addition.
Addition, additions of 300 are already taken, so 130 instead of 300 is what you're saying will be the difference.
Based on a equalized people number of?
286.15.
Yeah, it's coming in at 283, so we're close.
So last year was 296.53, right?
And I, my reason for suggesting that is pursuant to how he's motioned earlier, best case scenario, under the cap, would be 130 additional, is what you'd be looking at. Worst case scenario would be 301.
And we won't know what those cases are until we actually have the equalized pupil number sorted out.
So we need to decide if we're going to ask administration to come back with 130 less or 301 less, or none of those. Or all, mm, that's a long line.
For the 300.
And I'll say, I mean, I'll say this, I told this to the staff today and we talked, the, we've already heard from people who are concerned about the impact that the, your first 300 has on kids. I think people have spoken very eloquently about that. And I don't disagree with the principle of where they're coming from on these things. Obviously, as someone mentioned, the intent was to do it with the minimal impact to kids. That was pretty, pretty upfront with you guys initially, that there was going to be an impact to kids.
Mm-hmm.
There's no way to avoid that, if there was, and then you would have bigger problems, probably. Anything from this point on, I'm going to tell you, is 100% going to have an impact on a much wider breadth of kids. Okay? So just be aware of that going in, and that might be okay. For some of you might say that that's what fiscally has to be done, and others say we can't afford to do anything else. I just want you to know that there's, when you're, a number like 300, you're talking quite a few staff members. And, which means significantly higher class sizes and significantly fewer offerings. Or entire departments potentially disappearing. So I want to make sure that, that's, I'm happy, well, I'm not happy. I will do what I'm told to do, but I want to make sure you guys are aware going in that's what you're asking for. Which might be important to have, so that you can be educated on what that means. That might be the point, but you, but I think you'll, you'll need to see it. I will also say that to do that, without having developed a new schedule here, which is, these guys will tell you desperately needs to be done, um, with some reconfiguration of the middle school, there's going to be a lot of variables in play. It's going to be a lot of guessing, educated guessing around what the impact will actually be. So the further down that road we go, the less accurate, I'm, I feel confident in my ability to tell you what the impact is, just so you know. The deeper you go, the tougher that's going to be to be able to ascertain.
Okay.
Can I just follow up? Do you anticipate that same, um, challenge coming next year as well? Given the number we're looking at?
I was going to ask Lori about where these, what these numbers tell us about next year, with a 300 additional and without a 300 additional now, and what that potentially could lead to, if that's not fair to ask her on the spot. But if, if we're looking at this 300 comes off, and we're going to need another 300 next year, that's very different than saying this 300 can stay on and we need 400 next year. You know what I'm saying? Like what, how deep is this going to be in the next?
And I would rather have you have the good data from Lori when Lori actually has good data for you to present us real, better information.
That presents another problem because the timeline, as it currently stands to vote, when we currently plan to vote in early February, makes this really hard to pull off.
Can we push that back?
Well, that was a question I was going to ask, and I don't, I, I was here when we moved from doing the vote in the annual meeting to an Australian ballot, I remember that. I don't know why it doesn't happen, the Australian ballot can't happen at town meeting, and maybe there's a reason for that.
It came from a petition from the voters to do it earlier.
We would have had to do it here, had to do that.
Yeah, so we, we might, I don't know if we can move the date now.
Well, you can ask the attorney, but no, I don't think we can.
Probably not, okay.
It might be something to consider for future years.
It has to be warned, it's not our decision to make, it's not our decision at all. It's the, it's the, um, school district's decision, and they have to make it at a duly-worn meeting. And our next duly-worn meeting is in February. So we, we could propose that on our, our warning, but it wouldn't impact this year.
I just think that would extend the timeline for everyone, and then when you're, when you're walking into the situation, you have numbers that are more finite.
I think there's potentially options, um, to, to deal with it, but it's not, we couldn't just change the date of the meeting. I mean, it's, it's possible, we could say we're not, you know, we're going to present a budget and recommend you vote it down, or whatever, I think you could ask.
Why would we do that?
Well, I'm just saying, if we just, yeah, if you, you, you can't just delay the meeting, I don't believe. You have to come up with, so if you're contacting the attorney, you might want to ask that question as well.
Ask that question.
That's interesting, yes.
There are other avenues.
No, necessarily, no.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be just a change of date.
Yeah, because our current timeline is you guys decide next Tuesday. We have to decide by next Tuesday, right, I know. There's one out in the audience there. Go ahead, Sarah.
Speaking as a parent, and I, um, I have to give you a little background, is that when I moved here, I moved here because of this school, not because of any other reason. I chose to come here because this school offered more than these other schools in the entire southern part of Vermont offered for my children. And so I chose this school for my kids. My concern is, is that if all of a sudden we start reducing the things that are being offered here, how many more students are going to choose to go elsewhere beyond what we're already predicting? And what effect will that have on this budget in the long run? Are we going to have to reduce again and again? Um, and if we keep going down this hill, it's just going to get worse. Um, you're, if you keep cutting this, we're going to have a school that's just a run-of-the-mill high school, and there's no incentive for people to come to this school. At this point, we have an awful lot of really good programs here that actually are still drawing and holding students here. My big concern is if we start cutting, they are going to start leaving at a higher rate than you're predicting currently. And what's going to happen to this budget when that happens?
And to that end, I mean, thinking about, like, where we're going to be, I mean, we can plan budgets three to four years out, but until we know, like, educationally where we're going to be three or four years out, that can be a challenge as well. One of the challenges with doing this right now, so I'm in the chair now for, I mean, not even six months, and this stuff is all being thrust upon us. Whatever, whatever timeline I can have with staff to figure out what the school looks like in three to five years, and how that translates into costs, revenue, so on and so forth. And I'm not just trying to pay close to the dance, like, we just kept creative and, like, think outside the box. Like, it's, it's much more complicated than, obviously. But, but, but I think that it, we don't have the choice, right? There's going to have to be things that change, otherwise what, what these guys have described is potentially true for the school. It's just a downward spiral. And so we have to really think about where we want to be in those three to five years. I have already started working with staff and discussing and setting the foundation to do that work, to explore that. And I think that's something that really, that's going to take a little bit of time. I'm not going to be, I mean, I can give you numbers by next Tuesday, what 300 grand means, but I can't tell you by next Tuesday we were going to be in three years' education. That I'm going to need some time for. So I just want to make sure that we, that we're clear on that point as well. I have some incredibly caring, passionate staff who are committed to, to doing what we need to do to make Leland and Gray, you know, to, to expand what's the greatness that we have, but to make it, you know, even better. But it's going to take some time to do that work and to think through and to talk about it and to explore it. And then, once we come up with it, if it's, if it is a huge paradigm shift, then we're talking about training, and, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that go along with that. So I just wanted to mention that because I think it's, it's important to say that this, developing this one year at a time thing is, is highly reactionary, and I understand why we have to do it. Well, the ideal would be really is to respond now, react, get through what we need to get through to get a budget passed so we can operate next year, and then take from this point moving forward to really think about what that means. We talked about this last time, about getting you guys involved in that process in the summer as well, or whatever it looks like, to talk about where we want this, this, this school to be. So that doesn't go away.
I think that's exactly the way, I think you're exactly right, that's what we need to do. We need to.
So what does that look like?
Get something in place now so we can continue to operate, and then we absolutely have to go three, four years out.
Right.
Figure it out, look at, you know, this year, this year, this year, and, and stick, and come up with that plan.
Somewhere in this, this merger has to be part of the conversation as well.
Oh, I know. So we've been told.
I know.
I keep hearing about it.
Yes, Howie?
If we reduce our actual costs, and in spite of us reducing our budget, taxes go up. It's out of our hands. It's not something that the taxpayers can really blame us for. We could go to the taxpayers and say, look, we've cut our budget, it went down. We did what we had to do. If your taxes go up, take it up with the state, because we can cut. We can't cut, you know, so my feeling is that we look at the scenarios. So we can say, okay, yeah, if we go below this spending threshold, these are the drastic cuts that we don't want to make. And so we bring to the taxpayers a budget that cuts it down the middle. We reduce our budget, yes, your taxes went up a bit, but it's out of our hands. It's not because we're spending more at this school, it's because of whatever Montpelier is doing, and take it up with them. So I'm willing to, to bring a, a, a budget to the people that, you know, gives, that, that is higher than we would like, as long as it's lower than it was.
This draft we have right now is not.
Exactly.
It is.
So, so, you know, I would like to see, I'd like to see you work up something that shows what it looks like if we, if we go to full package, and say, okay, but we don't want to do this, it's too much. It's too much to cut, it's not fair to the kids, it's not fair to the school. And the other thing I want to bring up is something that Dan mentioned, which is grants. I would like to, I, I know it's, it's hard when we're cutting everything back, but I would like to see a line item in our budget for PR, grant, whatever you want to call it, somebody who is actually out there searching out and writing grant proposals and creating marketing material so we can attract more kids to the school. Because really, that's, that's a, the, the key to offering more stuff is to make the school more attractive, attract more people moving into the community. If we have a school that's attracting people to move to our community, we have a good argument to go to our taxpayers and say, hey, look, this is what it costs. So, so I know it's ca, you know, it's sort of counterintuitive when we're cutting back teaching staff, but I think it's really important that we look into marketing and promotion and grant writing, and actually have somebody on the payroll to do that.
And I, the PR piece I, I agree with, I think that's an important thing that we need to do a better job of. The grant piece is a double-edged sword. Well, we're not talking about federal, totally agree, we're talking about, like, private grants. I see what you're talking about.
Yeah, wherever the money is.
Well, I mean, part of the, the, part of the challenge of those things is they're often, there's, there's strings attached to the money. And it's not long-term, it's startup, it's to do something that then we're going to figure out if we're going to do it, and then you're going to continue it. I mean, and so there's, it's not as simple as just like, we're going to dump some money into the revenue side. It, it isn't that simple, it's like, there's an initiative they want you to do, which is going to cost that amount, and they're going to pay for that initiative, but it may or may not be related to where the vision of the school is. So that's what I mean, it's, it's one of those things that I, and then they pull the strings after two years, and then you're stuck paying the bill in the third year, and you're like, eh, I didn't really want this thing in the first place. So there's a danger in that, the low and easy money is, sometimes it is too good to be true. I'm sure there's good ones, but that's.
Well, again, it's, if, without having somebody really, you know, researching, without putting the time in, you don't have, you know, there's, nobody, everybody's got a full schedule, unless it's written into somebody's job description to do this kind of work and see what's out there, it's not going to happen.
One sec, Emily?
So I just wanted to address the point that Howie brought up about Montpelier and making the decisions. The decisions around our budgeting and our school spending happen only at the local level. All across the state, the decisions that are made, the ed fund is, um, we raise the money to fill the ed fund based on the budgets we pass at the local level. And I think it's really important that we remember that, because while we might feel good because our budget went down, it's a, it's a statewide education funding system, and if, um, overall, the spending is going up, the taxes are going to go up. I mean, that's just the way it is, and that's what's happened. So Montpelier doesn't make the spending decisions, the spending decisions are made at a local level. And it's a statewide.
They set up the scenario, these formulas that are, that are cutting our budget. They wrote, the law was written in Montpelier about these, about this whole, uh, you know, phantom students, all harmless, you know.
It was to help ease the process, and now it's being taken away because of the enrollment continuing to go down, and the costs continuing to escalate. And so I'm just, I, I just want to make sure everybody understands that the spending is decided at the local level, not at Montpelier level, that's all.
Okay. Vivi, I think you're next, and you.
I just wanted to speak to Howie's point about grants, in that, um, I also previously worked in the after-school programs, and a large part of the after-school programs is looking for grants. Uh, so I think there are, or that is a part, pretty actively seeking them. And then when I worked, I wrote and won like a $20,000 grant for the Wyndham Foundation, so it is happening. Um, a lot of it is sort of geared towards after-school, but it's happening, and they're a little bit more manageable without, you know, the strings attached and less sort of, um, connections of what they have to be used for. And I would argue that it does a lot of great things for our schools because the after-school programs are, you know, offering lots of great pieces. So it is happening. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Patty, you?
So just to express my, what I'd like to see is, um, I, I'd like to see what the extra 300,000 would look like, just for the, to realize that this is a serious situation. But I would not probably be in favor of bringing that to the Jamaica people, because it would probably look pretty bad.
Promin?
So, I don't know.
Sorry, I thought you were.
I feel like the best PR program we used to have were the extracurricular activities, the band, Journey East, the drama program, which is probably one of the reasons why Dale was to come here with his family. And as we reduce resources allocated to these programs, we sort of start into this feedback. So, um, I would like to be able to propose to, to, to tell, to, I would like to make sure the community knows that these hoops that we're jumping through in order to comply in a first measure, and then in a future measure with these requirements put, put to us by the state, are going to deeply, deeply impact the education, the quality, the staff, everything. And that, uh, before we make a decision and a recommendation, we would like to know where people stand. Are they willing to pay the extra dollars? Or are we willing to take the chance to see the high school, which is for all extent, for all. Or are we willing to take the chance to see the high school, which is for all extent, for all purposes, the center of the community, wither away and disappear? Because we are kind of seeing that as a worst-case scenario, but it's real now. So, before, I mean, it's always nice to see these very difficult numbers that you come up with. I can only imagine how much aggravation goes into coming up with these recommendations, and then going back and coming up with another 100 or 200 or 300,000. But before voting on anything, I would really like to get some information out there on what that really means.
Go ahead. Yes, you?
Yes. So, as Bong was just saying, then to be able to present to the public, the taxpayer and public, the voting public, a couple of scenarios, the most extreme. If you have to cut 600,000, and then we give us three or four scenarios. But the problem with this is we have this time crunch that next Tuesday is when you, as the board, are supposed to decide which budget to accept, to be able to present to the voters, who will then vote in February. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, there's not a whole lot of time. So, I guess you'll check with your attorney to find out if there is a little wiggle room in time for that. But the publicity around it, how do we let the public know? This is where we are. These are the scenarios. This is what it would mean tax-wise. Before you just accept one of those budgets and present that between now and February, there has to be a lot of discussion and publicity to the public. And then, when we only have one option to vote that one budget in February, and whether it's voted up or voted down, whether it's approved or voted down, it's not known if people vote it down because they don't want the cuts. In the past, historically, I know I've asked this question before, was the board assumes that when people vote down the budget, it means that they want more reductions. But in fact, it could also mean people do not want this budget because of the drastic cuts and what it will do to the school. We have no way of knowing that. So, I think to continue having a viable program, to keep students coming, to keep having families move in here, we need to look at what are the different scenarios and present that to the public so they can make a more informed decision.
Well, that's kind of why we hold meetings like this, is so that the public will come.
I have to say, last week, I know you said that it was worn, but when I looked in the newspaper, both last Monday and last Tuesday, it was not in the newspaper. This last Tuesday's meeting was not in the Brattleboro Reformer. Wednesday's meeting was for Act 46, but the meeting that we had last week was not in last week's newspaper, both Monday and Tuesday. It was not in the newspaper. I pulled it out of the old newspapers and looked at it. So, yes, it might be on somebody's, on the post office or a general store's place where they often post them there, but not everybody gets that opportunity. They're looking in the newspapers, wondering the meetings, or just that this is what the meeting is going to discuss. We have to let the public know that the budget is going to be discussed and a little more background information to bring people out here. And now, we're really tight. We have a week. That's not enough time.
Say something, Patty?
Is there a particular reason why we have to do this next week and couldn't do it the next week? Other than it's a Christmas break?
Well, it's Christmas break, and we have a timeline to get things to printers and get it out and make our, you know, our budget information meeting where we talk about what we've actually put forth, and then our annual meeting. We're kind of up against a timeline.
So, a couple of years ago, and I think you're involved, a couple of years ago, the budget got voted down. We all remember that. And I refuse to have any of us be handcuffed by this timeline to make poor decisions for our children, when there could be public who has a lot to say about it. My experience two years ago, I'm a NuFane rep, was NuFane mobilized. That budget got voted down, and I went up and down. I mean, everybody, I don't know if anybody voted in that, but we were really engaged in getting the message out. Whether it's up or down, whatever your feelings are, this second, the second budget proposal we put forward, two, was that three years ago? I think it was.
Two.
Two. It ended up passing, what, by one vote? So, I know that right now we're pushed up against a wall, but I don't want us to feel disheartened that there isn't opportunity for people to get engaged in this process still, even at this less, we may have to put a budget forward in next week or two weeks, quite frankly, that I'm just not gonna be comfortable with. But we need to move forward from there and make better changes and better choices for our kids.
And if you vote the budget down, unless somebody petitions to bring that same budget back, you have to go lower.
Well, then we'll have to make those decisions.
Budget has to go lower.
I thought you could change it, but it could go up.
Can it go up? It has to go down? It has to change?
Even I always said you gotta do lowers, so...
Well, I think we need to find that out. I'm not gonna just...
No, you have to change it, but it doesn't have to necessarily go down. You could go up.
Most people...
Yeah, the perception is that it's too much.
I think that's smart. So, based on what I'm hearing from around the table, I think we'd kind of like to see the worst case, and then go from there.
So, it's 301,000?
Well, you know, and if there are mitigating factors that we know of while you're developing that number, obviously take them into account.
So, threshold is what you're saying? Show us what the threshold...
As close as you can come. Yeah.
I think we need to know, because we have to present this to the taxpayers. We need to tell them what the worst-case scenario is. How is that exactly going to affect their kids and the school? If we don't have that information, it's kind of useless.
But you might not have that until next Tuesday.
And that doesn't mean we're gonna approve it. I certainly hope we don't have to go that far.
Yeah, no, no. So, if we don't have this information to share with our taxpayers, how is that gonna perform anything?
Are you looking for what 301,000 or threshold would be in reductions? Are you looking for a new draft to include those reductions? The reason I ask the difference was if you're going to publish anything online, if we happen to ever have it done in time, do you want that being a draft that's out there? Or do you want just a separate document like I gave tonight that shows, well, in this case, it was both. It was in, she adjusted in the budget, and I provided an extra document, which...
You're saying, is it okay if we just have a budget with a list of notes and not have to rework the whole entire budget?
I think something like this is easier for the general person to actually just say, "This is what they wanna do."
So, can I have some direction about what you want posted on the website? Do you want draft one?
Version one.
Version two? And then show what we've done?
Put the date on.
And then post, post the budget rationals. One sec.
Yeah, all those.
And post the rationals with each...
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, information about the next meeting? And have something that's on the landing page, the homepage, that either is a link or something. So, it's really easy for people to get to.
I, sorry. Just for clarification, just to make sure. Certainly. So, you like this format, but we don't have to go and change the entire budget, but we should indicate on this page where in the budget...
Which land?
Right?
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
But the budget will not show that reduction. There won't be a version four, but we'll just plug those numbers into three.
This version and then your notes.
Got it. Okay. Al?
So, are you also looking at the 130, which would be the three and a half percent equalized pupil?
Based on what the attorney, based on what the attorney says, sure. I mean, if there's any mitigating factors at all, equalized pupils go up, they find out what the exemptions are gonna be and plug those in, anything we can do to change that. You know, go close to the threshold. You were next.
This may be like a very elementary question. So, just from the process standpoint, so you're expecting or hoping that Bob will come back in a week from tonight with a second round of a budget proposal with 300,000 more cut, right? So, that happens next Tuesday. At that meeting, do you all then choose which budget you like better? The one with 600,000 cut or the one with 300,000 cut? Is that the process?
Or somewhere in between.
Or somewhere in between, and that's the budget.
And then, from there, that goes to the voting in February. That's what we're talking about? I try to think of a way to put this where it's politically correct. For that to happen a week from tonight with no input from the general public, to me, it just, it sounds completely unreasonable. I can't imagine, I have a community, really close-knit community of friends, who we all have really little children in the elementary schools around here. They have no idea what's happening, at least Leland and Gray with, in terms of the budget. I don't, you know, chat it up with them about budget cuts and things like that. If they then found out that they had no say or, you know, were able to come to any of these meetings and hear about any of this, and that it was just kind of left up to this group to decide within one week, it just feels, it is very unsettling, and it doesn't, it doesn't feel good, for what it's worth. Trying to get the word out to the public between now and next Tuesday so they know to come here, so they can hear what, what is it gonna look like for him to cut 300,000 more dollars? What is that gonna do to our school? Really? I, I just think that, I guess it's up to us then, as the teachers, to tell everybody who has children and care about this building to come here next Tuesday and witness what's gonna happen.
It's up to us to, to inform worthy representatives to our towns. And it's up to us to inform our towns by whatever means we have available to tell them how important it is to contact your person and let them know how you feel or be at the meeting. So, that's one of our responsibilities.
So, you're spot on. You're thinking is spot on. You're right.
You're right. It doesn't feel any better on the side of the table.
I am sure it doesn't. It's just, it's asinine to think that in one week, we're gonna say, "There goes 600,000 off your school budget."
And programs and...
Yeah. So, Emily was next, and then we go out into the audience.
So, I would suggest that since we have a timeline we've gotta deal with that we know of right now, 'cause we have a 30 to 40-day warning period we have to meet, no matter what. So, I would suggest that we submit a press release as quickly as we possibly can and try to make sure that we get the information out there as best we can, put it on Front Porch Forum, whatever, and explain that we have found this, the challenge that we're dealing with, and encourage people to come to give us feedback. And if they can't come, they could email and show them how to do that. We need a press release.
It's not a bad idea.
There are ways everywhere to do it.
Okay. You in the vest in the back. Sorry, I don't remember. Okay, Dale first, then Phoebe, then John.
First, I'd like to just thank you guys for this incredibly hard job that you're doing. And I am quite familiar with this situation. I have, in my career, I have watched four airlines go down the tubes, doing exactly what we're trying to do here. We keep trying to cut, and what happened with the airlines is eventually you reach a critical mass where people start saying, "I can't give back anymore." We went, we watched the unions give back 50% of what they were making, cut back on services to our paying public. You just keep cutting and cutting and cutting, and all of a sudden, what happens is you can't go back. There's no return to where you left. And you end up getting swallowed up by somebody else who had a better plan. I think what happened was, is in the end, we ended up becoming the largest airline in the world. And it was done because in the process of all this cutting, we reorganized and made it a different airline than what the old model was. And I think maybe what's gonna have to happen here is maybe we need to redesign the way we're doing things here without all of the draconian cuts and the, I would say, negative thinking of going down rather than just trying to hold our own for a while until we get some breathing room and figure out exactly where we wanna go. I'm just saying that it's a dangerous path to go down, because once you start going down, other things that you don't see today start happening. People start bailing to say, "You know, I can't do this anymore." And they start leaving. Pretty soon, you don't have any teachers left, and then where are you gonna be? I'm not saying that that's what's gonna happen. I'd hate to see that happen. But the reality is, is, you know, you gotta, everybody has to live here. And if there's nothing left, then what are you gonna do? So, I know it's a tough decision. I mean, it's very hard, but it's gotta be... I think once the public understands what we're up against, I think they might be a little more forgiving than you think. So...
Maybe.
But they need to know.
But they need to know, yeah.
And that's it. We need to see.
All right, so...
I just had sort of a logistical clarification around the budgets and what's gonna be published online, et cetera. Is, so are you asking, so Bob's gonna go back to the drawing board and cut another 300 and some? Are you suggesting that that be published online with his outline of what is gonna be cut? 'Cause my concern of that would be, that may or may not happen, and that's people's jobs and people's things that's like being broadcasted of like, this might happen, but it might not. And I have concerns of that being put online.
Until we get it, it shouldn't go online.
I do think the budget should be available online, but something like a prospective budget that is like the bare bones, major cutting, I would have concerns about that being posted online, especially since it may not actually go through.
We've never posted one until we've seen it as a board.
Yeah.
I agree with your concerns, and I don't, but how do we get across to the public?
Press release.
Look, we get the information we have next week. We make the decision we make, and then based on that, everything goes online, and we say, "This is the decision we had to make. You get to vote this down, but here's the other situation that we could have been faced with." And we get to make the decision next week how we move forward with that.
So, nothing goes online until we get it.
And this probably goes, I was saying, but every time there's an individual who is potentially impacted or a department that's impacted, I'm meeting with those people face-to-face.
Thank you.
I've done that this past week. I've done it with the full staff, so they understand what's going on, and I'll continue to do that.
Okay.
So, so you guys know that no one's gonna be outing here on, in a board meeting without knowing first that there's a potential, and even though it may not be realized, that they ought to know that it's gonna be talked about.
Right, okay. John?
How long has the administration and the board known of this 600,000?
Today.
Today. At three? Oh, three hours.
Well, 300 of it.
300 of it, we knew last week.
300 of it last week, and you know 300 earlier.
So, why is it just being discovered now?
The state.
Equalized pupil count.
I feel like it's...
The process.
It's the timeline of the budget process.
Happens this way every year.
The administration and the board is gonna take this process on at this point and bring it out? Use this as an example of mismanagement somewhere along the line? Is that right? I'm just catching on to this. Is this mismanagement of public funds? What would you call this?
This is a timeline that's been in place for many, many years. The reason it's becoming a bigger issue for us now is because the numbers are challenging. We haven't had them like this before. So, I mean, this is a...
Isn't this an opportunity to bring it out? And really make it, let Leland and Gray become, you know, the forefront of the problems?
So, we've talked in the past about moving our meeting from February to March. We've said that several times before. We've never followed through on it. That would help, would take some of the timeline pressure off. We're in the tightest crunch of any, most school districts in the state, because we vote early.
I just don't understand why, you just heard about today, yesterday, or the day before.
Right, you did?
I don't understand that.
Well, it's really about the equalized pupil count coming out. That's why we just heard about it now.
Comes out every year.
But really, the past of equalized students going down a little bit each year, but the budget not really going down in relation to that. Now, all of a sudden, you're at a point where... Now, all of a sudden, you're at a point where there's this twenty student drop in equalized pupil because of the Act forty-six law and the phasing out of the three point five, the way they're interpreting it right now, or I'm interpreting it right now. So it's a cumulative effect, really.
You next?
But as far as knowing about that extra three hundred thousand, that was literally today.
Howie was next.
John, I just want to say, it's happening like this because school funding in Vermont is like a Rube Goldberg contraption. There is no way of knowing. I mean, I've been on these school boards for fifteen years and every year, it gets more complicated and more hard to understand. The, the relationship between the number of pupils, the equalized pupils, the tax rate, the common level of appraisal, every one of these pieces is part of our budget considerations. And a lot of these pieces don't come down from the state until the last minute in terms of how, what other, you know, what we get per student is dependent upon what other districts are saying. And how it all works is, it takes a CPA to really understand. So really, all we can do here is we can control our budget, which, you know, is what we're doing.
It seems to me that this is an opportunity for Leland and Gray, this is an educational facility, to get this out and get it out in a big way. Because this is happening all over. It's not just happening here.
That is absolutely correct.
So this, to me, this is an opportunity to do something a little bit larger than just Leland and Gray in Townsend. Get it out there.
There were actually school districts that dropped twenty percent in their equalized pupil this year. So, you know, the.
It's actually the wrong direction to start dropping programs. This is the wrong time to be doing that. It's been said in a lot of different ways tonight. But the kids today need as much help as they can possibly get. And it looks to me like the, the board's kind of jumping ship on what the hell they're supposed to be doing here. And I don't mind being quoted on any of this.
No, we, we're trying to maintain the program as best we can. We have, but we still have to maintain staff levels in line with the number of pupils. Otherwise, the voters will vote for it.
All right. Yeah, yeah, I see you. Like, can I not? Dan was actually, has hand up ahead of you.
Oh. Okay, Jessica, quick. Oh, go ahead, you go first.
Well, I just want to say, you know, I, I want to support what the, the board has done for the last three, four months. And I, I completely agree, how this is done is completely asinine in terms of needing to equalize pupils at the, you know, the eleventh hour. That should happen in July. I mean, we, we build budgets the completely wrong way. That's the number that you need to start with. Here's where I need to build it out from. Here's where the equalized pupil is. And now I can build a responsible budget around that and start looking at if there is any potential backup to programs and all that. So, yeah, this is an incredibly difficult situation to be put in at the eleventh hour.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. Trying to get pay, pay orders. Yeah, Dan.
So, so we just learned a moment ago, Emily said that, you know, this is, this is how the budget operates. This is the timeline that we have. This is what we've given. So you're telling us that this is just the way it is. We find out seven days before the finalized budget has to be that we're going to drop another three hundred thousand dollars. So we can't publicize that drop until we actually see what those numbers are, which we won't see till next Tuesday night. So next Tuesday night, all in one time, we're going to drop the information of this is the money we're going to, we're going to have to further cut perhaps, and then we're going to make a decision on it. And we're not by, just by the way of the timeline, we're not going to be able to really involve the public at all, other than whoever might be able to show up next week. And you really, you can choose to follow that, or you can also say, no, we're not going to do this because this does not make sense. We're going to petition a say and we're going to change the date of our budget vote. And we're going to do that now. We're going to, we're going to change the date. We're going to legally warn it and we're going to change that date because we want to involve the public. If, if you have just your budget in its, you know, typical budget opacity, which is what budgets can be, nobody's going to look at that and be able to glean anything out of it. The information that Bob gave you tonight, here's what, three hundred thousand dollars in cuts looks like. That's something that people can understand. And I take Phoebe's point. It's like, you know, we're, we're telling the people, you know, you might lose your job. Nobody likes to sort of have that out in public. But on the other hand, if people don't really understand what we're going to be talking about next week, which is maybe six hundred thousand dollars in cuts and what those cuts mean, then you're not giving them information. And then, then all the information they have to do vote on is your final budget. You, you would be so much better served if the public could really give you, you know, you might be amazed at the people who come in here and say, just spend the dang money. Or I might be amazed at the people that come in and say, get rid of these idiot teachers and shut this place up. But you won't know if the budget process by virtue of its own timeline doesn't even allow that to happen. That's insanity. And you don't have to just go along with it. You do not, we do not always have to go along with the way things have been done. So Dan, that was why we directed the administration to go look at when they contact the attorney to find out what another scenario is. Now, when we are asking for an additional three hundred thousand dollar cut to, to look at, that's probably not going to be done until the time we meet, I would assume it's going to take.
Six thirty.
Yeah, six thirty of the night. So, I mean, being able to public, we, we can't change the situation we're in now. All we can do is change the situation moving forward. So let me just finish. The situation now is that we've asked for another draft, and a modified one at that date. And we're probably going to get that, that day when we, so we won't be able to publish that, but we've said we're going to do a press release and we're going to contact an attorney, see if there's a way to change the timeline. This is a surprise for all of us too. This timeline is the same one that we are on every year. It doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to have to be followed this year. We're looking into whether it is or it isn't. It's not like we're giving into this. We don't want to do this either. We don't want to be in this place. We would really like to not be in this place. But the fact is that we're probably going to be in this place next year too. So we need to be open and honest about that. And I, I want to make sure we are doing that. So, so let's look at what we're going to do this year.
Gerald.
So what would it take to change the voting process? I know we are doing Australian ballot and there was reasons in the town accepted to do it this way. But I remember years past, it was a floor vote and the auditor, the, the gymnasium was packed with people. And there was hours of discussion and debate and then there was.
Since. Since the vote was changed to Australian ballot by a petition of the voters.
Right.
The board has taken the position that we will change it, that we would entertain changing it back again, based on a petition from the voting public. So please, start a petition. We've asked for that at our last four meetings. We've asked for a petition. And we have not gotten a petition yet. So obviously, people are happy enough with Australian ballot that there's no petition forthcoming.
But that's still a year.
And that would be not for this year, that would be for next year.
Right. So my second question, Nolan, how soon are, how soon is this video up on your station to be able to be viewed by the public?
Usually a day out, the day out.
Tomorrow, okay. So in the public, in the press release, I know last week, we did not have minutes taken, so there's nothing to refer to on the, online for the website, the Schools for the Superintendent, Supervisory Union's website for those minutes. But clearly, there will be this week. And so in your press release, have people refer to the BCTV so they can hear some of this discussion even.
I would also encourage anybody that's here along those lines to communicate this link to anybody on social media that you're involved with. It's something I've done just through Facebook and you can really get a lot of people either engaged or at least interested in what's going on.
Go crazy with Facebook and stuff. That's what I do in Jamaica. And if you have time to make any phone calls.
Or go up and down your street.
And if you're out at the post office store, you see anybody, tell them, go up to them, tell them.
Bill.
Tell your, your town.
I just want to clarify. Okay. Am I responsible for the press release? Is that everybody's assumption that you want me to?
Nope, Jerry's.
Okay.
I will help you.
Okay.
I will.
Bill, based on that, yes, you're responsible. Will, will we?
No, I'm not. My husband.
It needs to be.
He's a writer.
And what's the timeline? You know?
Let's talk about it tomorrow. Let's talk about what we can put in the press release tomorrow. And obviously, we need to, you know, talk about what's, what's happening and sort of what the direction was tonight and, and that, you know, based on our timeline, we're really pressed to make a decision next week. So, you know, speak now or.
Well, can I ask?
Sure.
While you're speaking to the attorney.
Yes.
You've got, you've got two questions, I guess, already.
Section twenty-two and section twenty-three and the meeting.
And the meeting. So I would also, what you're asking about is can we delay our, our goal on our budget? But I would also ask the process that we need to go through if we decide that we want to move our meeting to later in the year permanently? Because we can warn that, when we, when we do our annual meeting warning, we can add an article on there to say we would like, this is something that I've been hoping we would do for a number of years and no one seemed to be too interested in doing it. But maybe we could do it at the end of March, or we could do it at town meeting, or whatever. It'll be harder at town meeting if we don't go Australian ballot. So, you know, those are the questions that need to be asked.
Sure.
Of an attorney, what's the process we go through to move our budget approval process to March? Or even April, if we chose? I mean, what is the scenario?
And what consequence we may face if we do.
Right.
I, I don't think we should do it at town meeting or after town meeting because elementary school budgets are at that time. And I think that it's important for everybody to know what this deal is.
So that's part of the question to ask.
Yeah.
And the other thing is around the merger, is how much the merger will impact this. If there is, if there's going to be a vote on a merger.
Yeah.
This may be a, you know, if, if a merger passes, this might be a moot point. So I guess what I'm saying. There'll be a different date. One vote.
Right.
For K-12.
On town meeting, different.
Probably.
Right.
Depending on.
Joe, could I say one more? Shorten.
I am new to this job. I've been this, for five months. But this is incredibly valuable and important. Working with people of the caliber of Bob and Lori and working through this process and thinking through it on a long-term, sustainable, community-based, I think you all mentioned it being a, the school being a magnet for families and really being the heartbeat of our area. We're a new team that is working with some really talented people. And there's real opportunity here. I know it feels really, really challenging. And it, and it can be. But facing reality is kind of the first step of saying, what are we going to do? And, you know, just coming tonight and sharing your thoughts and, you know, the energy that you have, I mean, we can, we can create anything we want here. You know, it's up to us. And we need to make the argument for the investment and we need to listen to the students and we need to think to the future. But the control's really in our hands. And maybe I'm being really naive, but I think the talent exists here to make anything we want to have happen. We just have to do the work. And we're just beginning the work. And I think this might be the most difficult time because we've got to face the reality before we can move forward. But it, it's really quite positive. I know it's scary, but we're being honest and we're being authentic. And I think that's the beginning. So I just, I think it's important to, to mark that moment.
A tiny little shameless plug to piggyback on that. You guys are talking about this press release that you're going to put together. And I have just sent a press release about community service, which is finally happening at Leland and Gray. And will be interesting that it's going to be in pretty much the same papers about the budget as that community service is now officially on the table. So thank you for your support in that. Another positive note of things we're doing.
All right. So you know, you know where we're going with the budget, right? We've worked that all out now?
Who's talking to you?
Yeah. No, do you have enough, you have enough direction to go back and do what you need to do? Okay.
But it wasn't a number. It was under the threshold.
Right. Which may, that target may change. I'm going to start with three oh one and we'll see what magic or conjures up.
And it's not a whole new draft, right?
It's just the notes. It's just the list.
And we're going to see potential impact on property taxes.
As much as we can.
As much as we can.
Close as I can get it.
Yep. Okay. So, given that it's nine thirty, how much of the rest of, ah, you have to, please, we need this.
Yeah. So I was going to suggest that the two items, or several items on my report, we could table again. On the backside of the list of reductions is my report for the month. So we can read that or.
And we have your report. You have my report.
Thank you.
The proficiency-based graduation presentation.
Oh, don't leave. This is the good news part of the night.
We'll put that off.
This is the one little bright spot we get.
So I think this, this, and I don't know, plus we want to have Dom, Dom present as well. While he's here, I want to make sure we don't leave out the student presentation.
Yeah, let Dominic present, but give us the good news.
So let me give you this first. So we received this on the, last, beginning of this week, I guess, or end of last week, that there are, there's this thing that the AEW does called Mont Presidential Scholars. And the awards are given for outstanding leadership and service to the communities. And there are ten of these given out in the entire state. All right? Two of them of the ten are going to Leland and Gray seniors.
Amazing.
Yes.
One of them may share my last name. Kayla Tebow and Caroline Teetz.
That's really.
Incredible.
That's awesome.
Saw that in my.
Yeah, really cool. So of course, I'll be up there with them at the State House on January ninth for a reception.
Is it January ninth? Because the date was wrong somewhere. I knew it had to be wrong. It was on Facebook or something. So it's the ninth?
This says Monday, the ninth at four thirty P.M.
Excellent.
So anyways, very proud of them.
Congratulations, them.
Really great.
Two of the ten, twenty percent of the winners are in our little budget lady school. So that was very cool.
Dominic, I know you have a report that's buried in this stuff here. But go ahead, the first is yours.
So first, the basketball season has started. Tryouts and all three games starting in December. You can find the full schedule on the Leland and Gray website. The Project Feed thousands campaign kicked off with an assembly. We had guest speakers of Joe and George Haynes, who was one of the co-founders of Project Feed. I talked to Ms. Landenberger and she didn't have a certain number of how much we donated, but she said it's just as good or better than last year. And the NHS will be taking it all over to the Townsend Food Shelf on Monday. And the NHS will be taking it all over to the Townsend Food Shelf on Monday. I have the 10th grade class put on a high school semi-formal on December 3rd. And the players usually do hats off first, but they were already getting ready and preparing for Dracula, their last show this year.
Cool. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Dominic? How's the basketball team doing? Do we know?
Middle school girls started today.
And? And? They started practicing, you mean, or they started?
Had our first game this evening.
And?
It was not victorious, but the boys won. Fifty-fifty.
Okay. Take that.
I won't tell you how much we lost, but, okay. We have room for improvement.
Did they have fun?
They did have fun, and they fought the entire game, even though they scored two points.
All right. Okay, so old business, Act 46, I, there's not a lot to tell you. It's in process, the, I guess, on the 20th. We're presenting the articles to the Agency of Education?
State Board of Education.
State Board of Education. And we'll keep you, our next meeting is January 4th. And at that point, we're going to put together a timeline for all the public outreach that's involved before that goes to a vote. Sabbatical requests kind of came off the table based on budgetary things.
Well, I think you'll still need to, the requests are still there.
Okay.
So the board will need to make a determination of all those at some point.
You have enough time, but you'll just have to act on it.
We have bills and pay orders that were handed to me. They're all reviewed and everything's correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we have, we have three general fund warrants in the amount of $192,928.31. And two, I'll give you the sheet, Peter. And two payrolls in the amount of $262,799.93 for a grand total of $455,008.24. Need a motion to approve those?
I'll move.
Second.
Who moved? Who seconded?
Drew moved.
Twyla seconded.
Twyla seconded. All right. Any discussion on any of that? All right. All in favor of approving them? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Beautiful. The minutes for the consent agenda, we need to pull the 12, 6, 16 minutes because I actually took those, but I have not typed them up and distributed them yet. But they do exist. So we need to pull those out of there because I need to distribute them, and I'm woefully